Good afternoon and welcome to the March Meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. I call this meeting to order, and we do have a quorum, so we're ready to begin and go over our first item, which is the approval of the minutes. Everybody should have received a copy of those and reviewed those. Is there any, are there any edits or necessary additions or deletions? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Those are approved. Thank you. Diana, our first bit of business today.
All right. Good afternoon. Our business today, we have an application on 451 East College Street. This is a request to demolish a contributing home. The request comes from Ann Chafin and Steven Todd. They have, they're here and have some information they're going to give you as well. This is approximately 1,100 square foot home. It's a Gwinan cottage. It was, the Historic Register states that the home was built around 1890. The property assessor's office lists this home as built in 1920. There is a caveat to this. I'm in the feedback. Several months back, they came into the planning department and asked for a permit to demolish the front porch. And I have no idea who, but who, someone in the planning department looked at it, they looked at the property and signed off on it, not realizing it was in the historic zone. So the applicant went through the proper channels, it's just that on our end, we didn't catch it. And so they did go ahead and demolish that front porch, which I think was maybe significant to the home and what made it stand out. In your application, you can see pictures, and it does show that that porch has already been removed. But Mr. Todd is here, and he had some information from a structural engineer that he wanted to share as well, so.
If you all would come forward and state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Steven Todd. My address is 1723 Waterford Road in Murfreesboro. And my sister and I inherited this property. Our grandfather bought it in 1945, and it's been rental property up until my mother, well, so my grandmother, then my mother, and when she died, my sister and I, Ann Todd Chafin, inherited the property. So when my mother died, I tried not to rent it anymore because it is in, it was in poor shape then. It's in that section of College Street that, you know, is basically, at least that side of the street is mostly rental property. It's, I think you already mentioned it was built in 1920, and you've got some of the paperwork. I did have a structural engineer look at it, and unfortunately, he didn't get the report. And it's, it's a short, two-page or page and a half summary, which kind of supports some of the other information you already have, but adds a couple other points. And as Ms. Tomlin mentioned, this started because we've been trying to patch and plug since, you know, for the last 10 or 20 years. When the porch fell in, the backside of the porch on the house actually was starting to cave in, so it became a hazard. And I went to the city, and we had a permit filed and a demolition permit to take the porch roof off. And while we were doing the porch roof, we had, we were approached, and actually been approached several times about selling the house or the property, which we would like to do. And so in October last year, we had an, had a, accepted an offer, and then that fell through. And then we had another offer in December that then fell through just last month. And I now have another buyer that's interested, that's also got Murfreesboro roots. Actually was, her dad was my old dentist. So we have had offers on the property, and we would, we were definitely hoping to sell it. But everyone that has come to offer would like to have replaced the house. So with that said, can I provide these?
And I'll just say, I'm Ann Todd Chafin. I actually live at 321 Glendale Drive in Pulaski, Tennessee. I actually live in Giles County. I left Murfreesboro because I have a husband in Giles County, so that was where his roots are. But I'm born and bred Murfreesboro and graduated here and been here a long time. And I may know a couple of faces up there from high school.
So to continue the story, as I held off on building the porch, rebuilding the porch because we were hoping to sell it, then the siding needed to be replaced. And then as I had bids on the siding, they indicated that they couldn't repair it, they had, it would have to be replaced. And the wood behind the siding is bad. And then in the engineer's report there, it, and I think in a couple of the other instances, it refers to the fact that the foundation is bad. It wasn't properly built. Also, the roof structure is not good. Neither the roof meets code nor the foundation, the crawl space doesn't meet. And some of the information in that letter from Mr. Garner indicates that you would literally have to redo the entire foundation, also tear out the flooring and the walls and dig out the underneath of the house to make enough crawl space to meet code. So with all that said, you know, I would appeal that it's a hardship, it's a house, as Mr. Garner put it, that's dilapidated. There's not, to my knowledge, anything in that house or that is made up of that house that is, that could be saved. The floors are bad, the walls are bad, the siding's got to be replaced, the porch has got to be replaced, the roof's got to be replaced. And I've got to excavate under the house before we could redo a foundation or build anything. So with all that said, that, that's sort of my case. And again, our desire would be that, that we can tear the house down. We certainly may be able to sell the house, sell the property with the house on it, but I do, I have had quite a few offers on the property, but everyone that's offered is interested in rebuilding something within the historic guidelines. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have, I have a couple of questions. How long has the, has the house been unoccupied, been vacant?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
How long has the house been vacant?
At, I don't know exactly.
About 15 years.
I was going to say 10, but somewhere between 10 and 15 years.
Our mother died in 2006, and it was not occupied at that particular.
It wasn't? Okay. And secondly, any of the, of the potential buyers that you've spoken with about the property, do they realize that it is in an historic district and there will be stipulations?
Definitely. I've made that clear upfront.
Okay.
Our last person that just said he wanted it actually owns the house next door, which is.
Well, the next to last person.
Next to last, well, okay, yeah, next to last. I get, you know, people have called and, anyway, he owns the house that actually is supposed to be demolished, but is still sitting there. And so that's really when a lot of this started, was when that house sold, and then they got a permit to tear it down, then people started inquiring about our property. And he initially thought he would buy both properties and combine the two because our property had the driveway and his property does not.
I know, I know.
And I should add, there is a, there is an easement, our driveway, to allow the property next door that Mrs. Baumann bought and then had come to the board to have that house torn down over a year ago. And then she sold it to Mr. Jennings, that's part of the Holden family. But the driveway, it's our driveway, but there is a six-foot easement for the house next door on 449 East College.
Okay. And who did you say bought the property from, Mrs. Baumann?
Yeah, Thomas.
Thomas Holden Jennings.
Right, the third.
The third.
Oh, okay.
He's young.
What other questions does the commission have?
Just the report from Garner Engineering. On the first page at the bottom of the paragraph, that last paragraph, he's referencing current codes. Has anyone from the codes department participated in the review of the Garner report?
They, to my, no, I've just got this yesterday.
Okay.
And, I mean, the codes department has seen some of the property, but not the entire property.
And they just kind of pull up and walk away, or?
What about some photos?
What?
Didn't you get a little?
I don't think we have any kind of official statement from the codes department. They have not reviewed this for the Historic Zoning Commission.
And do we have photos that could be shown on the monitors?
Yeah.
I wanted to correct something too. When we applied for the permit to destroy the porch, we had actually received a letter from the city that said we were to tear the porch down. We did not actively come to get the permit until we received the letter from the city that said, "You've got to tear it down."
Okay.
So that was.
It was messed up all the way around, wasn't it?
Right, exactly. So it's been kind of a, a, a few months, we'll just say, because it's, it's left hand, right hand, honestly. So we did not initially instigate to tear the porch down. We were told we had to tear the porch down. We did what we thought was correct.
They had sent the letter before I knew the porch had fallen in. If I'd seen the porch falling in, I would have proceeded and touched base with the city like we did, even though they sent the letter before I could, so.
That was a life safety issue, and that's why they sent the letter, to protect the public.
Right, certainly, certainly. I mean, but I wanted to correct because.
That initiated it, yes.
That was what initiated, thank you, that's.
Well, I was just going to say that, so if they determined it was not salvageable, building codes did via that letter. Okay.
Yes.
Oh, this is, oh, this is the, is this the porch?
Mm-hmm.
You're talking about the porch roof, I think, right? Not the, not the deck? So we don't see pictures of the actual.
Right. We don't have pictures of the roof.
Right, okay.
I've got a question about our ordinance. Isn't there a year, a 12-month time period if, if someone doesn't follow through, that they have to come back to?
Six months?
Six months, I think.
I was going to say, yeah, there is a time limit on it.
It's usually six months.
Six months, okay, so.
For most cities.
Ms. Baumann's property has passed.
Right, yes, right.
It changed ownerships also, which I would think would negate the approval.
I'm sorry?
It changed ownership also, so that would, I would think that would negate the approval. Because it would be different circumstances. She had plans for another house, which would no longer exist.
Correct. I just think she needs to be notified, perhaps, that.
She no longer owns it.
Mr. Jennings III needs to be notified.
He bought it with the right to tear it down, is what he told us. I don't think he has that act of courage enough, so. That's his assumption.
You know when that happened? Do you know when that, the sale took place?
December of 17.
Wow.
Not 18, this is 19.
It was, it was definitely 17, yeah.
A year ago this past December they came. So it was December of 17.
When who came?
When Ms. Mary came.
Oh.
Not when she sold to Jennings, but when Ms. Mary came.
Go ahead. Good to see you, Mr. Todd. I actually went, you may recall, I went and looked at the house with you, it must have been in, it was in the winter, January, February, perhaps of 18. It was cold. I, that's what I remember. And, and I just wonder if you've, you have a engineer's statement, but have you actually asked for any estimates, what, what it might cost to rehab or repair, anything like that?
Other than I have an estimate for the porch for about close to 15,000, I have an estimate for the siding for 10,000.
Uh-huh.
And I have not gotten an estimate for the roof yet because that was, I just found out about that, that whole roof would have to be replaced. And the flooring, I have not gotten an estimate. But given that every component of the house has to be.
Needs work.
Repaired, I have not gotten a full estimate to rebuild the house.
Right. Well, as, as you know, I'm, what I'm thinking about here is the fact that this is a contributing structure in the National Register District in our, in our historic district. That means that it contributes to this historic significance of the district, and so we have a limited number of structures that are, are contributing. And every time we lose one, that shrinks the historic district, and it shrinks the value of having a historic district. And I know that, I know that almost anything can be repaired, and so the question becomes, what is the value of the property versus what are the costs of the repair? And would it still be possible to make a profit if you were to repair it and then sell it? And the reason I bring this up is that because there are a number of other houses in the district that are, are not getting due attention, too particularly on Main Street next to Davis Market, which are, will soon be in the same sort of condition. They're also contributing structures. So at a certain point, we have to, you know, start thinking about how we approach these houses that are sort of short on, on maintenance. And so that's what I'm just wondering, what the value would be versus the value?
Yeah, based on the letter from Mr. Garner, the indication would be that you would, you would basically need to rebuild the entire house. And based on some estimates my son's just gotten, that sounds like about $160 a square foot.
To reconstruct, to, to fix it?
Given it's a, it was a four-room house, and they added on, it looks like the bathroom was added on to a deck.
Yeah.
And the kitchen maybe as well, so it's now a six-room house. I would, it's about 1100 or 1200 feet, so it sounds like it would be about 150, 60, 70,000 dollars to repair it.
At $160 a square foot, 1100 square feet, that's 176,000 dollars.
Right.
And I think someone actually that looked at the house said it would easily be over 100,000, I believe. Maybe you and I might have had that discussion even.
Yeah.
When we talked, that it easily, it would be over 100,000. And that was before we had the issues with the porch and some other contributing things.
You do have a summary statement in the American Structural and Foundation Repair Report that states it's the opinion of that office that bringing this house up to code, you would basically build a new house, and it would be much more difficult, and the cost of trying to keep this house standing and performing repairs would exceed the cost of building a new home, for whatever that's worth. That's the report that they turned in, not, it is not their engineer's report, but their inspecting report.
The one with the photos, isn't it?
Yes, yes. He doesn't give you an exact on what it would cost, he's just saying it was essentially cost, what it would cost to build a new home.
It's not germane to this discussion, but I feel obligated to say it. If your lot, if we decide to allow you to tear it down, and/or if the person next door who wants to tear theirs down and buy both lots and join them together, everyone out in, who's listening and watching this show should be aware that we have guidelines for new construction. So if he thought he could build, get two lots together and build a McMansion there, he will not be allowed to do that. He's going to have to fit the guidelines, which, which addresses scale, size, all of these kinds of things, and that it's appropriate for the neighborhood. So I'm not trying to harm your ability to sell your property, but I want to make it clear to everybody, because we've had this come before, when Bubba was trying to subdivide his first house, the backyard, is that you have to follow the guidelines, which says you have to look at the neighbors immediately adjacent to you and work with those kinds of scale issues. So I'd just like to put that out there, that everybody should be aware of that.
Mr. Jennings, when he was, when he made his offer, was going to build a house on both lots.
Right, he was going to build two houses.
Right.
Oh, okay.
One to rent and one to live in. But that is not.
Or one to sell.
Sure.
And I had another question too. Are you finished, Jim? I'm sorry.
I am finished, over.
For Diana, I guess. I have the economic hardship guidelines, but, but what about neglect? I couldn't, I couldn't find that in there. I mean, I think, I think that should.
I don't know that we addressed that.
We don't? Okay.
Could I follow that? Actually, I had something I wanted to add. Because I'm an advocate of preservation, and I, and I live in the neighborhood, I'm a block away, so I wrestled with this. And it's certainly not a precedent that we want to set. But I did more research, and I found something I felt was relevant here on the National Park Service website concerning contributing and non-contributing. To the point of non-contributing, a building not contributing to the historic significance of a district is one which does not add to the district's sense of time and place and historical development. Or one where location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association have been so altered or have so deteriorated that the overall integrity of the building has been irretrievably lost.
And that's non-contributing?
That's, and that's further how a contributing building could become non-contributing.
Okay.
So no question this is a contributing structure simply because of the age. But I would also have to think that it has become non-contributing, in my opinion.
Yes, I agree with you.
The question of contributing versus non-contributing, though, would be determined by a historic architect who would examine the district. And I think there are ways, for right now, it's, it remains contributing because that's what our inventory says. And then we would need to reevaluate. And I think that's one of the things that I sent Diana an email that, that I suggest that we consider reevaluating. Our district was last evaluated, perhaps 1980s.
Eighty-four.
And at that point in time, to be eligible for the National Register, generally speaking, a structure has to be 50 years old. And since 1984, many, many structures have become more than 50 years old, and so there could possibly be quite a few more buildings that are contributing if we were to do a new inventory and update the National Register nominations. So, but I think the building could be rehabbed, and it could be, it could be done using some of the original materials, and that's an important factor in rehabilitation of a building. You know, if you can use any of the siding or, you know, flooring or foundation or any of those sorts of things. But I think the question remains, you know, what is the difference in value? To determine economic hardship is, the property values in downtown continue to go up. As you know, Mrs. Baumann sold her property six months after she bought it at a, at a pretty healthy profit. And I don't know what property values are doing downtown right now. I suspect they continue to, to go up. But, so that, that would be my question if, is what would it cost to rehab it versus, it's going to cost 10,000 to tear it down, and then another 160, 170, 180 to build a new house? So that's, there you got, you know, or 200,000, depending on the, the features and.
I mean, it seems to me that it's going to cost 170 to rehab it because there's not any savable.
Right, I would say, so, so therefore, but if it costs 200 to build a new house, then rehabbing is cheaper. Is, you get my point? Do you see what I'm?
I.
It may not be the same, it may not be as luxurious as the house that, that, you know, the 200,000 dollar house would be.
It'd be difficult to rehab if I've got to dig out under the house, rebuild the entire foundation, and all of the floors and ceilings and walls. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not, I think that would be a difficult rehab.
Well, it would be.
So it may be, based on what I've heard from the engineer and the other individuals that provided reports, I think it would be more costly to rehab it than to build.
It may be, you know, that, that may be, I think. But on the other hand, you might find an engineer who is sympathetic to preserving historic structures who would give you a different story.
I tried to. I called three or four engineers. But again, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
I just think it will be difficult, if not impossible, to rehab the house. I shouldn't say impossible, anything's possible, but.
What further questions does the commission have of the applicants?
I don't have a question, Mr. Chairman, but I do have a comment. And I, and I would have to agree with Mr. Jakes that the house is, because of the deterioration, has become uncontributing to the, to the historic zone. And having stopped and walked around and looked in and seen some of the pictures of the facility, of the building inside and outside, I don't know that there's anything inside or outside that you could use if you rebuild. I mean, it just appears to me it's all gone. And the siding, which is, what's the word I'm looking for? Vinyl? I mean, it doesn't look that bad looking at it, but if you get up close, it's chipped and breaking, and, and it's hiding a lot of things beneath it that I think really would make the situation difficult. This particular block needs a lot of help.
Yes, it does.
A lot of help. And it seems that Mr. Todd and his sister have done a lot of research on this, and it appears that the best solution for somebody to come in and do something with this property, with this lot, would be to allow what they want to do. And of course, we have to keep in mind, we had the same issue with a very adjacent house with Miss, Miss Baumann, very same situation, same deterioration. House became non-contributing because it just had been let go for years and years and years. And understanding this particular block and having somebody willing to do something to be, to rebuild, and where the rebuild would be, have historic significance. And this was done with a fire, a house that was on fire in the 300 block of East College, right?
Yes.
Two houses in.
Mm-hmm.
The house was demolished because it was more than 75% gone because of the fire. To my knowledge, to my feeling, this house is more than 75% gone because of the deterioration. That house, it was rebuilt on the 300 block, fits in really well with the neighborhood. So just my opinion at this particular point.
Are there any other comments from the commission? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion regarding this applicant.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? If not, the chair would welcome then a motion by saying aye to approve the motion to demolish the house.
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
No.
It appears then that the mo, your request has been approved and thank you for coming before the commission.
Thank you very much.
Diana, is there any additional business?
Yes, there is. I have spoken with Ms. Jane Coleman Cottone and she is with the State Historic Preservation, whatever they're called, body. Anyway, she is willing to come down and do a training session for the Historic Zoning Commission in April. So April 21st would be our next meeting. And the planning director has also offered that we could provide lunch if you all could make the meeting earlier. That's totally up to you if you want the lunch option. It's also up to you if you want the training. But I have worked with Ms. Coleman and spoken with her about the kind of training we're looking for, that we'd certainly like, you know, that basic to start with of where do our powers come from, what kind of guidelines do we need to be adhering to? And then get into some maybe examples and structures for us on how you go about updating your guidelines, making decisions on new policies and, and expanding the district if you wanted to do so. We're, we're working with an outline right now, we haven't got that solidified. But if you all are interested in that, I will make that a, a solid plan with her. And if you're interested in lunch, then let me know that. And the director has said he'd like to buy it.
Double check the date. Yeah. Appears to be a Sunday. It's, it's also Easter.
Ah, okay. I've written, I've put the wrong date. I don't have a calendar in front of me, let me look. Oh, I don't have my calendar.
Y'all are available on Sundays, right?
Come on, what have you got going on?
I'm, I'm running late to church, actually, is what's going on.
Yeah, football's over, so. It's the 23rd.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay.
Yeah.
Would that be at the time of our regular meeting or?
Well, that's up to you all. She's available all day. If you'd like the planning department to provide lunch during this training, they're welcome to do that. We can start at 12:30 or if that's hard because you all have jobs and you'd rather come at this time, that's fine as well.
I don't have a job.
Totally up to you. We don't even like retired people.
I'm pretty flexible.
Actually, the format of the meeting itself.
Let's do it. I mean, it's gonna take a while, I think. We need to learn some things.
I mean, us sitting up here and someone sitting down there, I don't think is the format that.
Right, right. We may want to go up to 2:18 and, and sit at tables and then come and have the meeting afterwards.
And it may be better for her to have a lunch, to give her something to say thank you, you know?
Yeah.
Other than a key to the city or something.
Which is gonna be prayed out on a golf here.
Well, I think as a certified local government, we're required to have preservation training, so this would suffice for that. I think, I don't know, for a year or however long it would be. So I think we, we as a group ought to do it. I think it'd help everybody to attend. Perhaps not while we're holding this meeting, we can discuss, you know, the time later or after this meeting is over.
Sure.
To minimize the amount of airtime we have.
Yeah.
But I think we need to discuss it. I think it'd be great if we all did it. I don't care if we have lunch or we don't, doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
Agreed.
Any further business?
That, that's it on the business.
Linda, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to move that we adjourn the meeting.
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor here who want to adjourn the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.